All right, so we are live on YouTube. And I will call this meeting to order at 6:30 PM. First, I will just give everyone an update. We did have a board work session prior to this board meeting where we discussed both violence prevention and the strategic planning process timeline. And shout out to Vice Chair Lynn and Director Urban for their leadership on that. And we will be scheduling an additional work session in the future to discuss in depth. So with that, Dr. Ricky Smith, are there any changes to the agenda? There are none. All right, with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda. So moved by Vice Chair Lynn, is there a second? Seconded by Director Urban. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we will move to a coral vote. All those in favor of approving the agenda, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, say nay. Motion passes and the agenda has been approved. And with that, we will move directly into recognition and good news. And it looks like I'm handing it off to Lisa Burden.
Okay, good evening, everyone. I'm very honored this evening to introduce our two of three Mecha groups. The students from Creekside couldn't be here this evening, but we do have here the Tiger High Mecha students, and I'll let them introduce themselves. And the Walton High Mecha students, and they're here to share a little bit about their plans for Hispanic Heritage Month and week and month, and a little about themselves.
So hello, everyone. I am Brittany Hernandez, a senior at Tiger High School. I'm also president of Mecha Tiger High. I just want to thank everyone for giving us this opportunity to educate you on behalf of our culture. To start off, I am Guatemalan. Guatemala is a country I can call a second home. It's a country full of history, culture, love, and faith. Not only can I call my second home, but it's a land where my parents were both born and raised. Guatemala is known for its indigenous roots. The indigenous people in Guatemala are of Mayan descents. The Mayan group are shown by their language. There are approximately 26 languages that are still spoken. I'm proud to be part of the Mayan culture, and I'm saying part of it is because of our ancestors that were conquered by the Spaniards. So that makes me mestiza, which means half-blood. In addition to our Mayan culture, Guatemala has a rich history and many things that I'm proud of. One example, one particular thing I like about visiting Guatemala is learning about the Mayan ruins. For example, Picar. Picar was the heart of the Mayan capital. It had a library full of thousands of books. Unfortunately, today, there are only four Mayan books that still exist. However, Guatemala is not only known for its Mayan culture, but according to National Geographic, it has one of the most beautiful lakes in the world, Lago de Atsman. It also has some of the most active volcanoes in the world. Every year around December, my family and I visit their homeland. During these trips, my brother and I learned how the tribes grew up. The way they grew up is extremely different than how I grew up today. They didn't have much as I have today, which I am so grateful for having. While visiting Guatemala, my parents came, my friends, oh. So while visiting Guatemala, my parents and I sure, we travel around the country to learn its history and beauty. With its fascinating taste in music, mariachi is a national instrument. It's an instrument with wooden bars and played by malas. It's played a large role in helping to shape our indigenous roots. Moving in, moving on from Guatemala, traditional dish, sorry. It's traditional dishes. It's a traditional meaty spicy stew that can be found in food carts, restaurants, or at home. Pibion contains vegetable and fruits, such as pears, squash, carrots, potato, and many more. Pibion is a spicy stew, and it's mixed the country's Mayan and Spanish heritage. It's one of the oldest dishes in Guatemala's food heritage, and it's a must-have. Another important place to visit and never disappoints is Antigua, which is a word for ancient. It was founded as Santiago de los Caballeros. It was Guatemala's first capital. It was destroyed by a volcanic eruption that poured down from the slopes of Volcán de Agua, volcano of water. On top of that, it was also demolished by an earthquake, Santa Marta. After that, the capital was moved a few miles away, which is now Guatemala City. Santiago became known as Antigua, Guatemala, Guatemala of Old. Throughout its history, Antigua is still respected for its love and appreciation of food, music, attraction, and the people. My love for Antigua stems in the history behind each corner you come across in the city. In the city, there are numerous ruins of religious structures which are breathtaking. With numerous cities, people, and history, I got the chance to wear a traditional handmade material dress. My culture is tremendously important to me. I make sure I don't forget where I came from. I indeed miss my home, where some parts of my family still live. But I am so grateful to have an opportunity where I can educate others and myself. It is an honor to bring light to my culture. Everyone should have Guatemala as their must-have travel list bucket list. Thank you for taking the time to learn about my culture that I am so honored to, so honored and proud to be part of. It is a core part of my identity, and I truly appreciate that the TPSC Board gave me the opportunity to share this vital part of my heritage. Thank you.
Hola, mi nombre es, oops, sorry, that's really loud. Hola, mi nombre es Angela Aguilar, y yo soy la prepa de Tiger, y estoy en el grado once. Hi, my name is Angela Aguilar. I go to Tiger High School, and I'm grade 11. Hispanic Heritage Month is a time where I can express and celebrate who I am as a Latina. I treasure the culture and values inherited from my Mexican dad and first-generation mom in the US. They taught me how, they taught me how important it is to be humble, bilingual, and hardworking, and valuing being a person of color here in the US. I brought with me these traditional dolls from where I've, from when I visited my dad's family in Veracruz, Mexico. This one right here, and these right here. I have special Mexican, I have a special Mexican doll that my great-grandmother gave me as a symbol that she will always be with me despite the distance. A Mexican Loteria, also known as a Mexican Bingo, which is a fun way families enjoy and play for hours. That's right here. As we Latinos like to share our culture with others, I would also like to share food with you all tonight by sharing some traditional Mexican pastries that have been made at one of our locally-owned bakeries at Tiger. The Good Cake Bakery. Please enjoy these pastries, and thank you all for allowing a space for me to share who I am.
Hi, everyone. My name is Janet Polanco, and I'm a senior at Tiger High School. I've been, what does be, sorry. Okay, what does Latino culture mean to you? I've been pondering this question ever since I was asked a few days ago. To be honest, I was unsure how to properly answer it. I went back in my memory to when I was in middle school. Middle school was a journey, to say the least. Everyone older than me told me the same thing. You will start to find out who you are in middle school. I thought it was totally cliche, but walking through those front doors at the age of 11 in middle school, I was not prepared for the obstacles I would have to overcome to get where I am today. Much of the self-discovery I made had to do with my ethnic background. I, a Mexican-American woman, can say firsthand how frustrating it is to be looked down upon by those around me. To have things such as my academic abilities underestimated solely based on the color of my skin. There were and are still days where I would doubt myself based on others' perspectives and expectations. Are they saying I'm smart because they mean it? Or because their expectations of me weren't so low to begin with? Believe it or not, there have been times where my peers have openly said to me, Janet, you're so smart for a Mexican. This made me question myself. And to be totally transparent with you all today, I resented this part of my identity for a fraction of my life because I wanted to be treated like an equal so badly. It wasn't until I joined Mecha my freshman year that I started becoming friends with more people who came from the same ethnic background as me. I felt a sense of belonging and community with all the other Latinos like me. There were things from my childhood that I could finally talk about, and everyone around me would know exactly what I'm referring to. I'm sure if I mentioned the gold name bracelet I had as a kid, they would all see an image of it pop up into their head. For once in my life, I felt a sense of belonging in school. Now, you may be wondering, what does this have to do with culture? I believe culture is what us students were able to create in that room that day. We all gathered in CE2 that Wednesday morning and created an environment where everyone belonged and everyone was safe. It's the little moments like that that can totally change someone's view of life and/or themselves. I believe culture lies in the commonalities we are able to find within one another. So not only is my culture the food on my table, the traditional clothing we wear, or the language we speak, it's also the quinceañeras to celebrate a girl's 15th birthday in such a beautiful way. It's dancing until 2:00 AM while the little kids are asleep on the chairs in the corner. It's waking up at 8:00 AM to our mom's blasting chore music. It's staying up until midnight on Christmas Eve with family and friends to open presents. And most importantly, working hard, not to wealth ourselves, but to take care of our people in need and sharing what we can with whoever needs it. My culture is also believing in a dream and doing what it takes in order to pursue it. I carry the dream my grandparents did when they immigrated to the US in search of a better life. The same dream my mom carried as she worked and studied so hard to learn English through doctors' books at this very school. I carry the dreams of all those who have come before me, and it is my goal to walk across that graduation stage in June of 2022 to make sure they know all their hard work paid off in the end. Not only is my culture knowing your roots and where you or your ancestors came from, it is also embracing it and carrying yourself with pride. And I'm here to tell you that today and for the rest of my life, I am proud to be Latina. Thank you.
Hi. I'm trying to make sure it's not loud. Hi, my name is Samantha Ramos. I'm a senior at Walton. I am the president of Mecha this year. And Hispanic Heritage Month means a lot to not only Mecha, but the students of Walton High School. So this year, we're planning on doing a week-long event at the school for all the students, not just the people of color. The week is going to be filled with activities that students get to, like, do during lunch, after school, before school. And a big, important part of our Mecha group was not just to focus on the minorities, but the entire school as a whole. We wanted to make sure that the group of Hispanic people weren't, they didn't feel so, they didn't feel so like, like called out. We wanted the whole school to be involved. And we partnered with ASP. I'm also a part of ASP at the high school. And we've created a video, basically informing the entire student body about what Hispanic Heritage Month is, because not everybody knows what it is. And I think it's really important that we share that information with not just the minorities at the high school, but the whole school. We also wanted to recognize our staff, because we know that in the past, we haven't had a lot of staff that are people of color. So that's also something that's really important to us, because our advisors are Hispanic, and we wanted to make sure that everybody feels included. So basically, this week is supposed to be held from Monday, the 4th, to October 8th, which is Friday. We are doing fun activities for students that include, like, Mexican Bingo at lunch. We want to do, like, flag painting, because Hispanic Heritage Month doesn't just apply to Mexico. We wanted every country to feel included. We have, we have a lot of paintings that we're really trying to include students in. And it's just going to be a week-long celebration for just the whole student body. And it's something that we haven't done in the past, so I am super excited to be able to hold this event at all. I thank our principal at Walton High School and the board for letting me tell you guys about what we're doing at the high school. We're super excited, and we hope we get to share the results from it with you guys. Yeah, thank you. Okay, so with me here today, we have Jennifer Solis. She's our treasurer, so she's in charge of all the money. And she, yeah, she really helps us out a lot. She takes notes during our meetings. She's super helpful. Mecha wouldn't run without taking notes and being on top of everything, so I want to thank her today. And then Joyce is a junior. She can introduce herself later, but I'm really glad that not just the officers of Mecha were able to be here today, but members as well. I think it's really important that everybody feels like they have a position in Mecha, not just, for example, me as president. I feel like everybody should feel like they, they have a voice in Mecha, because it's not just me running the whole club. On my right here, we have Frida. She is also an ASP with me, and she's working on the Hispanic Heritage Month video with me. She's been super amazing. She is new to Walton. She's never, before this year, she's never stepped foot into the high school. And she caught on really quickly, and she is a big part of Mecha, and I wouldn't be able to do it without her. She can introduce herself, too. But yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I'm Jennifer Solis. I'm actually the secretary of Mecha. I've been a part of Mecha since I was, like, in sixth grade in middle school. And honestly, being here at Walton, I've always had, like, mixed emotions of being Latina and American. I've always felt so out of place, but just being, just joining this group, just being a part of Mecha, just showed me what it is to be a part of a community again, and I'm really thankful for that. To come to, like, a place where, like, I can just see a lot of familiar faces and just feel like at home once again. And not saying that nowhere else is at home, but it's just that one special place in your heart, and I'm just really thankful I have these people beside me.
Hello. Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Joyce Gomez, and I'm a member of Mecha. I used to be an officer during my freshman year, but I couldn't make it to Mecha last year, so I'm a member, and I'd like to be restarting now. And what Mecha means to me, it helps me find, like, my identity, the place where I could find my identity most, because it was, like, all over the place during middle school. I felt, like, off in middle school, then, like, joining Mecha. It made me feel comfortable and a safe, a safe space to, like, figure out, like, my roots and everything with, like, all the people beside me. And yeah. Sorry, I'm not really sure what to say, but like, this all last minute. But anyways, I hope to do more in Mecha during this year, my junior year and my senior year. And yeah, thank you for having Walton and Tiger Mecha here.
Hi, I'm Frida Ruiz. I'm a sophomore at Walton High School. I joined Mecha because I was in it throughout middle school, and I had never really felt Mexican enough throughout school. And I think being Mexican-American really confuses you, so having to figure out my identity by myself throughout that was really difficult. And I think Mecha has supplied me with such a safe space, and having people encourage me and support me has been really helpful. And I'm really grateful to be here and to share my experience with you guys, and really grateful to be in such an amazing club with such amazing officers. So thank you.
All right.
Actually, I did a presentation. I don't know if you guys can screen that. Okay. Okay, so today, we're going to learn about the Hispanic culture. By the way, I'm Yaslin, and I've been in Mecha ever since, I think, my seventh grade in middle school. And yeah. Can you hit the next slide, please? Thank you. Um, these are the main holidays that we celebrate throughout the year. I feel like these are, like, more popular than the rest. Independence Day, which was just a couple, I think it was last year. Independence Day is really important to us, because that's when we got independent from, like, Spain, I think it was. And Dia de los Muertos is coming up, and it's just where we, we just, like, memorize our past livings. They're the Virgin of Guadalupe. A lot of Mexicans are Catholic and Christians, but Catholics really celebrate this day, and las Posadas are also a type of religion in the Catholic religion. And it's just mainly, like, celebrating, like, piñatas and when, you know, Jesus came and stuff, so yeah. Our typical food that we eat is enchiladas, tamales, and tacos. These are really popular. I don't know if you guys have heard about them. They're really good, by the way. And yeah. Our type of music that we listen to is, I listed there, cumbia, giro, bachata corridos, mariachi, native dances. These are really seen on celebrations like birthdays, or, as I said, the Day of the Virgin. And yeah, they're really, we use these on celebrations a lot. We really like doing art. These are the folk art, Mexican tejidos porados. This is an example. It's really, it's a can-made, and it's really beautiful, honestly. And we do a lot of ceramics. The language, there's, like, a variety of languages we have, but mainly the ones I know personally are the US Spanish, now it's that, and mix them. And I think that's it. Yeah.
Hi, my name's Kevin. I'm a sophomore, and I am a member of Mecha Tiger High School. Today, I want to play the violin for you guys, a song called Chilito Lindo by Pedro J. F.
Hello, everybody. Martin Alvarez, Cultural Response Coordinator at Walton High School. Good evening, board members. First of all, it's an honor to be here and be able to look at our board and be able to see reflective more of our community, so thank you for that. And again, I would say, our students at both Tiger and Walton, Mecha students are incredible, not only what they do for our students within our schools, but also within our community, both. And Biddy can talk a little bit more in Tiger, but at Walton, our students are involved, not only at Walton, but also with our city. So they're incredible. I hope they can continue with this work, and thank you, and thank you, board members.
Hello, Viri Morales, Family Partnership Advocate at Tiger High, also one of the Mecha advisors. And it's great to be able to be back as a Tiger High alumni and a Mecha member when I was in high school. And Ms. Veronica actually was my advisor when I was in high school. So I got to learn a lot from her, and it's just great to be able to be back and help our students grow and help them do amazing things in our community as a Mecha chapter. Thank you for having us.
Does anyone have any questions?
All right. Well, first, thank you so much for being with us tonight. Those were some incredible remarks. I really enjoyed the presentation, and the performance was excellent as well, so thank you for that. With that, I'll open it up to board members for questions or remarks. Everyone's sort of looking down at Director Jaimez.
I wonder why. I don't know. Muchas gracias, muchas gracias por estar aquí y por haber venido a visitarnos aquí a su humilde junta que tenemos aquí. When I, when I was growing up in Eugene, I felt quite the same as you were feeling. And so I didn't find Mecha, which stands for Movimiento Estudiantil Chicano de Aslan, I didn't find it until I was in college. So I am so thankful that these programs exist now at the high school and at the middle school. And I think, you know what, the words that you are trying to say is that this affinity group that you have found this somewhere where you feel at home is, like, is perfect, because that is how I felt when, when I first joined Mecha. And not only that, but the leadership that it created in me and the fire that it lit under, you know, under me to want to do more for my community is something that I hope that lights a fire under you, so that you can turn around and, you know, be Chicano and be proud of who you are. And I know that Chicano has different contexts to everybody, but for me, Chicano is just being, being part of our Latino community and giving back and building that collective efficacy that we, that we need within ourselves, right, and within our community. And so thank you to your advisors. Thank you to Senora Aguilar back there, who's the Mecha statewide rep. And so, and hoping to bring more Mecha clubs into different school districts. So I appreciate you guys being here. And when, when I was in college, we used to do this chant where it was like, you know, somebody yells Chicano, and then you guys answer Power. So if we can do that right now, that'd be amazing. Okay, so I'll do Chicano, and you guys do Power, okay? Chicano! 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 Thank you.
Director Urban. Director Irvin.
So I'm the always emotional one of the groups. I'm gonna try not to get all teary all the time. Um, I, well, here we go. Um, I, it takes a lot to come and share your stories about identity. I sent a child off to college, so. Don't mind me. I'm the crazy one over here. Um, okay. It takes a lot to share things that are hard. And so I appreciate, okay, um, that you did that, that you were vulnerable and you shared some of us that don't have that experience, what this experience has been like for you. And I'm thankful for schools and staff and leadership that gives you a place to feel that community and feel that freeness of getting to be and learn and explore who you are regardless of the group or the affinity. To have those safe spaces created is a really special and not always present. And so I have so much gratitude and clearly emotion about um just allowing or having you guys come and share with me those traditions and those songs and those ideas and the things that you're doing in school and the sort of processes that you went through in terms of your own sort of searching for a place that feels like home and feels comfortable. So thank you for that. Um, and I'm gonna pass that on now. Sorry about that.
Beautifully said, Director Irvin. Bye, Sherlin.
Well, I wanna thank you too uh for sharing, but also for teaching, right? I mean, I think you, you really came tonight to, to do some teaching and to help us understand uh the culture, the various cultures, right? Um, across Latin America. So I appreciate that very much. Uh, you know, as a researcher, I know that uh there is a positive link between the kind of thing you're doing with Metta, right? You're, and particularly where you are um developing a strong cultural identity that, that for students of color, you know, this actually positively impacts student achievement. So, so good for T T S D to support these efforts because if we are supporting Metta, we're supporting academic achievement. And so um, I'm really, I'm really proud of our district and proud of you, um proud of your teacher uh and and all the work that you continue to do. Thank you.
Director Zershmi.
Okay, um, I just wanna echo, thank you for coming this evening. Um, and just a few extra comments I wanna make. Jeanette, if anybody ever tells you you're smart for a Mexican um, or smart for a girl, you just say, I'm smart, period. Don't ever let anybody do that to you. I'm horrified that somebody did. Um, I wanna go to Guatemala. Um, if you wanna be my guide, that would be even better because my Spanish is terrible. Um, Samantha, thank you for um including the entire school, Tuolton High School. I love that. Um, that is like leading by example of what does inclusivity look like. So thank you for that. And to everybody else who I didn't call out specifically, thank you for being here. I didn't mean to minimize you, but I don't wanna take up too much time, but thank you all for coming this evening. It was very meaningful.
Yes, bye Sherlin. I should have recognized the teacher from Tiger and Tuolton, so my, my bad. Thank you. Well, and we've got the, the statewide coordinator hiding in the back, back there, but we all, we all see here. Um, so with that, again, we will say thank you. I'll invite you to remain where you are for a moment while we move on to our next action item because it is relevant to what we're discussing. Um, so with that, I will move into action item part one, Hispanic Heritage Month Proclamation Resolution. And I wanna give a special thanks to Director Jaime's for his, his quick thinking here, um, for us to be able to do something together as a board. Um, and with that, Director Jaime's, I'm gonna pass it off to you.
Thank you, uh Chair, but I, can I sidebar? I think our friend had a comment.
I apologize. Student Representative Henry.
Yeah, you know, I'm just visible over here. Um, joke. Uh, I wanted to say thank you to all of you. Um, every single time that I hear a story, a personal story that gives you that vulnerability to come in front of these people. I mean, it feels kinda like, you know, you're presenting to a bunch of people that are just watching you. It's a little scary. Um, and as a student, I get that. And just every single time that I've heard a personal story, it just reaffirms my beliefs about what T T S D does around equity. And it reaffirms my belief that affinity groups are necessary and beneficial. And I just, I wanted to thank you all. I'm also trying not to be emotional because some stories are, they're impactful and you guys did a great job telling your stories and expressing your culture. So I wanted to say thank you.
Right. Thank you, sir. Okay, and with that, uh, thank you, uh Board Chair, for allowing me to read this proclamation. It was, um, I know very last minute and hopefully next year it'll be uh done a lot better, but you know, September always just kinda sneaks up on us and uh, you know, I don't know, they should have picked a different one. No, I'm just kidding. They needed to uh take education or educators into account. So um, with that, sorry, now let's get serious here. Um, what I would like to um, you know, introduce as a proclamation here for Hispanic Heritage Month. Um, I will read it for you. Whereas September fifteenth through October fifteenth, we nationally recognize Hispanic Heritage Month and the contributions made by Hispanics and Latino, Latina, Latinx Americans in the United States. And whereas Hispanic Heritage Month celebrates the history, traditions and culture of the Hispanic and Latino, Latina, Latinx residents in the cities of Tiger and Tuolton, we admire the invaluable ways they contribute to our school district by bringing rich diversity and growth. And whereas Hispanics continue um their, continue their rich traditions of significant and diverse contributions to the cultural, educational, economic and political vitality of the Tiger Tuolton School District. And whereas Hispanic and Latino, Latina, Latinx families have worked to overcome many challenges, often in the face of systemic racism. And whereas we strive to continue to commemorate this month by recognizing and dedicating ourselves to working together to address the challenges that still face our Hispanic and Latino, Latino, Latinx population. Now therefore, be it resolved that on this twenty-seventh day of September twenty twenty-one, the Tiger Tuolton School Board thus hereby proclaim September fifteenth through October fifteenth, twenty twenty-one, as Hispanic Heritage Month and encourage all students, families and community members to celebrate our unique and vibrant history and recommend ourselves to making equitable outcomes for all students possible.
All right. Uh, yeah, we can clap for that. Absolutely. So with that, uh, is there a motion?
I move to approve. I move to approve resolution twenty-one, twenty-two dash zero six, Hispanic Heritage Month Proclamation as presented.
Motion's been made.
Can I second?
Yes, you may.
I will second.
And motion has been seconded by Director Jaime's. Uh, is there any discussion on the motion? I will note, um, uh Director Jaime's, I believe you are the first elected uh Latino School Board Member in T T S D history, meaning the first who wasn't appointed. Um, and Martin, I think you were alluding to that earlier, but thank you for your leadership and your visibility in this community as well. So with that, we will move to a corral vote. Uh, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. And the motion passes. Congratulations, Director Jaime's, and thank you all again for being with us this evening. All right. Oh, yes. So before you leave, um, oh, do you have a question?
Sure.
They can't hear you. They can't hear you up there. So if we could grab that one.
Can everybody hear me now?
Yes.
I just wanted to add that this is for the school board members. They are individually wrapped, so they should be, they are okay to eat. Um, they have the business where it came from, the Good Cake Bakery that I mentioned in my presentation, as well as if there's any leftovers for people here and the Metta students who presented. Thank you all.
All right. So we will invite you all to come stand up in front. Um, our superintendent, Dr. Ricky Smith, has something she would like to give each of you. Uh, and we'd also love to get a picture um with you and the board um as well, so we could post that. So with that, Dr. Ricky Smith.
How about y'all come forward and turn facing this way, please. There you go. I do. And, and so I wanna basically echo everything that you've heard this evening from the adults uh and to say, you know, how incredibly humbled I am uh to have you as students in our district. Uh, when you and Director Jaime's were doing this Chicano Power, I was thinking about how you are exhibiting power here by being who you are and living your lives in our district and sharing your stories and then taking a leadership position. And I wanna say thank you to the adults uh who are your mentors and your guides um and, and point the way uh to what, what is possible for you. We as a community are richer and more blessed because you are here. We would be diminished if you were not. And I'm particularly pleased as a woman and a leader to see so many women in leadership roles. So go girls. And uh we'll look forward to seeing you in your schools. What we have here is a Cold Stone card for each of you, five dollars. Um, and so we hope that you enjoy as a small token of our gift to you for being such a gift to us.
All right. While that is being passed out, and you all are more than welcome to head home or stay at the board meeting, whatever you prefer. Um, I will warn you, it gets a little dry sometimes. Uh, but thank you again. No, you're always welcome to come speak with us as, as a board or as board member. So thank you again. And with that, um, we are going to move on to student representative reports. Uh, the only student who's able to join us in person tonight is um Henry. However, we do have one written report that we'll do afterwards. Um, so with that, I will hand it over to Henry.
So um mask wearing has stayed vigilant within the school. It wasn't like a one week thing. Um, it's been really good. Uh, lunch has gotten much better as well. Um, but bus, bus masking is still for me a concern. I've seen plenty of students not wearing masks on the bus. Um, my bus, since we're on the topic, um, has also been really weird this entire month. I'm sure that you all are aware, but sometimes it'll come twenty minutes late or even five minutes early. Uh, one day it didn't even show up at all and today it was forty minutes late. So I'm sure you're all aware, but um, I mean, I don't always have a ride to school, so it's a little, the unpredictability is a little stressful. Um, so uh less students are complaining about passing time as well. It's less of a topic. Um, but it definitely still bugs a lot of my peers when it is brought up by a teacher. Um, pretty much everybody's hand in a room will raise. Um, but it's definitely been, uh, people have gotten more used to it. It definitely makes sense when it is explained why. Um, students are sympathetic to that. And on the topic of COVID, it's all, I've also heard some students um getting a little more worried about COVID and hearing the classmates are getting COVID. It's definitely been a little stressed and wondering what they can do. Um, so that's been a topic. Um, and then, I mean, it still feels normal other than that. It's just uh, you know, there's just, it's just changing. Students are adjusting. Um, Stud and T I Act, so the Tiger Youth Advisory Council and uh Club at Tiger's Stop Teen Underage Drinking and Drugs are both working together on a mental health project for Tiger. Um, there's talk of incorporating Tuolton, but there aren't a lot of representatives from Tuolton on Tiger Youth Advisory Council, so it's a little hard to get them incorporated. Um, but the project is, it's aimed like to create posters and hang up, uh, that hang up around the school uh with QR codes that you can scan. And it gives students resources or videos to watch that are made by students. Um, and it's meant to take, teach their peers about mental health, acceptance, resources and support. Um, they're also presenting similar information about mental health. In the health two classes, there will be present, presenters that will go in for fifteen minutes and give a short presentation about mental health, mental health acceptance, how it's normal to feel the way you do, as well as differentiating between mental health and mental illness. Um, other than that, the Newburgh football game went well. I, it was honestly, it was very inspiring to see and hear all the students at the football game um representing Tiger and really representing how we care for the Newburgh School um students. And it was not, there was no aggression. It was a lot of um compassion. And I felt pride after that game. I went home and I was proud of all of my students and I was proud of the Newburgh students, the ones that were there, the ones that are dealing with this. And um, it was, it was just, I, I, it left me kinda speechless. Um, speech at the game was great. And on that same note, there was a student that came to me um personally, and uh she's planning to write a letter to students directly affected in the Newburgh School District. Um, so affinity groups, LGBTQ community. And she was um, she's planning to draft that letter as well as writing a letter directly to the school board um to express how it's being seen from the outside, what's happening in their district and asking for change. And then she also talked about doing a fundraiser or an event and she, although we, I don't have a letter drafted, she was wondering if you guys would be willing to support her in that way. And she wanted me to let you know that that's what's happening and um maybe get your support. I don't really know how I could give you her email, but um, yeah, so that's my report.
All right. Well, thank you, Henry. That might be something you could bring to your meeting with Dr. Heisman to figure out what, what makes sense. Um, and with that, I'll ask Director Zershmi to read the board report from Evelyn.
Okay, so Evelynette from Creekside Community High School couldn't be here this evening, but she gave us her report. On Wednesday, Metta presented our culture to the school in a very exciting way. Our squad programs are running and kids are meeting new people, making connections by engaging connections like identity bags. The Creekside Community High School garden is thriving. They are making spaghetti sauce with the tomatoes they have harvested. And invite me. Um, and the social emotional learning is thriving with self-awareness and mental health sections. So thank you for that report, Evelyn.
All right. Thank you very much. And with that, I will move to Superintendent and Board Communication, Dr. Ricky Smith.
So I want to um continue where uh Henry led us relative to the Friday night game at Tiger versus Newburgh. Um, I'm very excited to share with the board and with our community that we have been able now to finally launch and implement uh O S A A uh STAR initiative, which stands for Safety, Tolerance, Acceptance and Respect. And the pledge that was read Friday night has been read at every single game that entire week, uh whether it's soccer or cross-country or volleyball. And will continue to be done to do so and going forward. And we want to give a particular thank you to Coach Ralph Green, the husband of Marji Green, Executive Director of the Foundation, uh who has been a state leader in this work, uh brought it to our attention as we were working on the hate speech and bias uh policy. Um, and just have nothing but profound gratitude for him and for Principal Bailey for initiating that and getting that off the ground last week. In addition, now I'll go over the rest of my notes here. Uh, wish to share relative to our COVID dashboard status. Uh, for the week of September twentieth, we have thirty-two students who are positive cases or staff positive cases, a total of three hundred and sixteen individuals who are in quarantine. And the dashboard now includes data from the charter school as well. This brings our total number of positive cases since September eighth to fifty-four. We also saw the transition of our first full classroom to quarantine and into instruction. We also saw the transition of our first full classroom to quarantine and into instruction online with a fourth grade classroom at Templeton Elementary. I should stress that all of these positives were from community external contact, not contact within the school. As we saw our number of classes and numbers of those put into quarantine nearly doubled in a week's time. For example, we saw Tiger High School manage through the reporting and tracing of 10 cases in just one week. So Henry, you're absolutely right to hear students be concerned. With our priority continuing to center in doing what is necessary to keep students in school, learning in person, we made the following decisions. Homecoming dances are on pause. And I want to be clear that at this point they are not canceled. On pause, not canceled. And I've heard loud and clear from both Principals Delbera and Bailey that they want to continue to plan a celebration for students and work directly and are working directly with the ASB. So that at some point, when it is safe and that everyone chooses, they can participate. Two weeks ago, we had two scenarios where several schools were impacted after Tiger told school district students participated in overnight events, were exposed to COVID and subsequently brought those exposures into the buildings. It is with that as our guide that we, along with our high schools and coaches, made the decision to cancel an overnight trip planned by the Tiger High School Girls Cross Country Team. And that was not an easy decision for coaches or for administrators to make. We have also pushed the start date back for welcoming volunteers in our buildings to October 18. We are taking a strong look at other options to mitigate the risk of disruption to in-person learning as we continue to evaluate the events that draw large crowds. And most specifically are high school sporting events, which we all love. Considerations include pivoting back to a ticketing system to manage the numbers of events to ensure proper distancing, requiring attendees to show proof of the vaccination, or potentially limiting or eliminating spectators, which is the last thing you really want to do because we all enjoy cheering our favorite athletes on. I have asked Director Fields to work with our high schools to coordinate meetings with their student leaders, which I plan to attend. I will talk with the students about some of their thoughts relative to these events and how we can keep each other safe. And I look forward to getting their ideas and engaging them in these difficult decisions. Director Darren Bernard and Director Rose are working closely with our youth football organizations in both Tiger and Twalton. This partnership will help to ensure that we are aligned in keeping our students safe and make for immediate responses to exposures. Thank you.
Any questions for Dr. Ricky Smith? I did want to ask, Henry mentioned the bus issue, and I know there's a community announcement that went out about bus delays. Could you provide a little background on that and what the plan is moving forward?
Yes, thank you. So today we had a unique situation that we frankly have not seen before. Eight drivers turned, called in ill this morning. It appears that two of them had physical injuries, one to the hand and one to the foot, making it impossible for them to drive. And the other six had a variety of ailments, but two were able to recover by afternoon and were part of the shift. STA made a remarkable pivot this morning and was able to keep the delays as much to a minimum as possible at elementary and then middle and secondary. And by afternoon, the delay at that point overall, but Henry, yours is, is one that I will run to ground with Operations Administrator Gomez. Relative to this afternoon, the delays were added on maybe another 15 minutes to make, make the shift. Tomorrow morning, it is anticipated that their drivers will cover all of that and we should be back to business as usual. So I want to give a shout out both to Director Rose this morning for getting the communication out as quickly as, as we're notified. And the notification came, right? And to Operations Administrator Jarvis Gomez for his tight working this morning with STA. Relative to buses, in terms of masking, that continues to be an ongoing monitoring situation that he is working with STA. In addition, seating charts have now been established for every single bus and should be in place or if not, will soon be in place. And there too Jarvis is monitoring that and for the implementation this week.
Thank you for that information. It is one of the conundrums of not providing, not owning the bus services. Okay, so board members, updates or questions for Dr. Ricky Smith or your updates? Vice Chair Lynn.
So you mentioned the possibility, Dr. Ricky Smith, of requiring vaccines potentially for kids who participate in sports or athletics. Or could you say more about that? And then if, if my thinking is correct in terms of where you're going with that, I'd like to know more about sort of how you would do that.
Yeah. This actually is just specific to spectators and Vice Chair Lynn. So much as we have seen with universities where they have asked for proof of vaccination prior and masking prior to entering. That is something that is on the table, but certainly will be brought forward as part of my conversation with students and with administrators and in looking at that as a way to ensure that in activities that are elective, such as sporting events, not mandatory, that we look to find ways in which we can up the level of, you know, mitigation, if you will. We know that, you know, because people have been so hungry to participate, our stands make it extremely difficult to get kids, you know, three feet, let alone six feet apart, as well as our spectators. And so this is part of, you know, continuing to walk our talk around if we want our kids learning in person. We really want to try to do the best that we can to mitigate those outside sources. So this is one of those pieces. And this is a piece that was brought forward to us by Washington County Public Health as a, as a, as a strong recommendation for both, particularly when we go to indoor sports almost exclusively during the late fall and early winter. So that will be part of the conversation. Relative to student vaccination, there is a great deal of conversation that is happening at the state level. And as soon as we have more information that's more fully formed, we'll bring it to the board for, for your, for your information consideration.
Reports. Director Irvin. I was gonna let you two settle that one.
The mic fight. So I just had one thing. I think several of us were part of the Coalition of Oregon School Administrators Equity Summit this last week. And that was on Thursday. And so I, the breakout session I went to was specific to the ethnic studies integration that's coming. And so there was a lot of great information around what that looks like, what makes Oregon's approach unique in that it's not just a secondary approach, but really a K-12 infusion rather than a standalone force per se. And so that was really exciting. There were some great keynote speeches as well. But yeah, I think, you know, it's kind of, it also talked about how, you know, teachers can start using some of these materials really now, but 2026 is when it will be required as part of curriculum. But it was exciting to see the things that are already starting, the schools and teachers that have already sort of taken the reins a little bit and started using that in our classroom. So that was exciting.
Director Jaimez.
So I also want to echo Henry's, you know, congratulations or appreciation for what the students did at the Tiger Newburgh game. As someone who works in the Newburgh School District, you can, you can, it's a safe bet for you that you guys know what we're going through out there. And so I really appreciated the fact that our students had the ups to realize that, you know, showing love is a longer or a long way rather than shunning or ostracizing the Newburgh students because it's really not their fault what's going on. And I just love all of the support that was given by the Tiger. And, and, you know, I'm sure Twalton will show the same love, but, you know, just, just our school district and how, you know, how inclusive we, we are. And, and, and yes, we have a long ways to go, but you know, but during that time we rallied and we showed support to our Newburgh students. And just want to say that, you know, nothing that's going on is their fault. So we should definitely direct our concerns to the powers that be, not to the students themselves. So I really appreciate all the support. Thank you.
Director Zerchmi.
So I just wanted to say, I had a conversation about a week and a half ago with a student at Twalton High School who expressed some concern about how masking was actually taking place or wasn't taking place in hallways and in classrooms. And I followed up with them a week later. And he said, oh, it's gotten much better ever since Dr. Ricky Smith's community newsletter went out. The students are masking much more routinely. So I just wanted to let my superintendent know that her words are making a difference. So thank you for that.
That's great news. So I wanted to provide a few updates. One, I attended the Oregon School Boards Association Legislative Update last week with Richard Donovan and Lori Sannsfield, who both worked for us as our advocates in the building. And I'm pleased to report, we were basically on top of everything that was presented. We've had board reports about it, more discussions with Dr. Ricky Smith. The one that did come up, and we're going to be, this is an executive committee and bringing it back is there's legislation passed that requires every district to have an equity committee. And it's very broad about what the requirements of that committee could look like. And there's actually an exemption for all districts under 10,000 students where they don't have to comply until, I think, 2025. But for student, for districts over that, which is us, we have until next school year. So Director Lynn and I will be bringing a recommendation to the board about how to be in compliance with that piece of legislation. A redistricting update, our advocacy collectively worked and it was in fact a bipartisan issue. The, there was a Republican on the redistricting committee who attended Tiger High School, actually, who was spoke in favor of keeping Tiger together and the map that they approved today kept Tiger together. So now we will actually have one Senate district where the majority of the population is a TTSD district, which is great. So yeah, and echoing some of the comments on the football game, that, so I didn't come out as gay when I was in high school. I came out when I was in college. I was actually resonating when you were talking about discovering Metra in college. I think it's a sort of similar situation. And I had like a mildly emotional moment when I was walking in, which I did not expect at a, at a football game. But to see the banners that were hung up by the students, not by the adults, by the way, this wasn't like TTSD adults going to hang these banners. It was by the students. I just thought it was a really cool moment. And the speech that was recorded, I don't know if it's Mr. Bailey or who's running the Tiger High School Twitter, but the post of the speech is basically gone viral. Nick Kristof of the New York Times retweeted it today. And, and like you said, a huge shout out to Ralph Green because he actually started that initiative. And he presented to the board about it. And it was just really cool to, to see those words coming from a student who delivered them so compellingly. So I just wanted to highlight that and, and thank Dr. Ricky Smith for, this was my first time doing the Tiger High School Football First Half, Twalton Second Half. And it is quite the gauntlet, but it was, it was fun to do that and see my colleagues at both of those board or both of those football games. And then finally, I just wanted to highlight and maybe clarify. So Dr. Ricky Smith, according to my reading of the dashboard, we haven't had a single onsite exposure. So what that tells me is if folks in the broader community would use the requirements that we have in our schools about masking and distancing, that's what we need to have happen. And I just, I'm fearful about some of these numbers, some of these trends going upward. And I just think it's really important for all of us individually and collectively to be emphasizing vaccinations and wearing masks. Because it seems clear, I'm not to say that we're not going to have any onsite exposures, but as of right now, that's not where the problem is occurring. So kudos to our staff for implementing a plan that is so effective. So Dr. Ricky Smith, I don't know if you have comments?
Thank you. The only comment that I would, additional comment I would make is, is the incredible commitment that Director Rose, Director Kinch, Director Darren Bernard team and our principals at the school level. They are the ones that are doing the heavy lifting in terms of contract, contact tracing. And it is arduous work and it takes, you know, hours. And it takes them away from their primary focus, which is instruction. And so again, I appreciate the board's emphasis relative to behaving safely in the community because it helps us do, helps us focus to the work that we want to do this year, which is closing those academic gaps and getting our children back on track where they need to be. So thank you for that recognition.
All right. Any final comments or updates? Okay. Oh, yes, Director Jaimez.
I just wanted to say that that hashtag of greatness is, or greatness is hateless. You know, that was amazing.
Yeah, that is.
Ever coined that one. That was a good one.
I think that's a Ralph Green original, which is awesome. Okay, with that, we will move from Superintendent Board Communication down to public comment. And Patty, can you confirm that we have no public comments for board topic or for agenda items? Okay. All right. So we will move down to action items, part two. And our first action item is about Art Rutkin Playground Port in Place Rubberized Surface Material. Director David Moore.
Good evening, Chair Bowman and members of the board. This evening, we're asking for board action on the Port in Place Playground Surface at Art Rutkin Elementary for both the pre-care area and the K-5 area. And this is the same material that is provided installed at both Templeton Elementary and Calhoun Early Learning Center. And it's also procured under the same contract, cooperative contract that we acquired the playground equipment at Art Rutkin through the U.S. Communities Contract, which is advantageous to the district. And it provides a high level of economies of scale because it's accessed by hundreds of jurisdictions nationwide. So the, the total amount of the contract proposed by game time under the contract is $274,346. And those are the highlights. I'd be happy to answer any specific questions about the contract itself. I don't know a lot about the construction part of it, but.
Board members, any questions? Oh, do you have one? Vice Chair Lynn. But thank you. Yeah, if you could just say more about, it says to pour in place rubberized surface material. I think I know what that means. Maybe you could share more details.
Yeah, so the, we have to take care of the, the, the under surface. So it has to be either concrete or asphalt. So you've probably seen this type of surface at various playgrounds. It would take the, the place of any cedar chips as being the safety surface. And it, it holds a five-year warranty. So during that period, there would be low, if, if no maintenance. And then probably after the five-year period, we'd be monitoring it to see when it needs to be replaced or, or improved or maintained.
Is, is maintenance of the material, would that be part of general fund dollars moving forward? I assume like when a playground's bark chips need to be replaced, we have that budgeted.
Out of Director Bernard's operations budget. If I could twist his arm to spend them.
Any other questions? Director Zerchmi.
Not a question, but a comment. I, this just amused the, in the. Not a question, but a comment. I, this just amused the, in the, in the bid, it refers to this being alephatic binder. And I found that fascinating. Like, what does that word mean? So I looked it up and it's a non-aromatic carbon binding compound. And it turns out that it's the one we want. It's the one that resists sunlight and resists water better than the aromatic ones. I just want the board to know we're using really good rubber there.
All right. With that, with that, I'll entertain a motion.
I can do that. I move to award a contract to game time for the Art Rutkin Playground poured in place rubberized surface material for an amount not to exceed $274,346 as submitted.
I'll second.
Motion was made by Director Irvin and seconded by Director Zershme. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we'll move to a coral vote. All those in favor, please say aye, aye. All those opposed, say nay. All right, motion passes. Thank you, Director Moore. And with that, we will move on to Action Item B, Second Reading of Superintendent Goals with Dr. Ricky Smith as the presenter.
Thank you. As I received no further feedback from the board regarding the goals as they were presented during the first read, they stand unchanged from the first read. And so I would offer this back to, to you, Chair, relative to approval.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Ricky Smith. Any questions or comments for Dr. Ricky Smith? All right. I will just say, thank you again. We've had several discussions about this, but the purpose, as you'll see for this in the subsequent action items, is because these are such high-profile issues and such important issues in terms of Superintendent Evaluation Board Goals, we do put them as second readings. So we could have put them in a consent agenda, but this provides space for folks to ask questions and make comments. And I will just say, I think it makes sense to be considering these superintendent goals and board goals when we're considering our five-year strategic plan, what is lengthening these look like for full alignment. But with that, if there's no comments or questions, I will entertain a motion. Director Hames?
I move that the Tiger Twalton School District Board of Directors approve the 2021-2022 Superintendent Goals as presented for second reading.
Motion's been made. Is there a second? Seconded by Vice Chair Lynn. All right. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we will move to a coral vote. All those in favor, please say aye, aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you again, Dr. Ricky Smith. And with that, I will scroll to the next item, which is Second Reading of Board Goals. Moving to my cover page here. Yeah, so as we mentioned at the previous meeting, we've discussed this in depth. I do not believe that there were major changes, just minor tweaks from the first reading. So with that, I'll open it up to board members for questions or comments.
I think we pretty much hashed this one out to death.
I agree.
Last, last, last time. So if I can stall while I scroll through to get to, I, I move to approve the 2021-2022 Tiger Twalton School Board Goals and Measurements as drafted.
Motion was made by Director Zershme and seconded by Director Hames. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we will move to a coral vote. All those in favor, please say aye, aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. And we have approved our board goals as well as our superintendent goals. So that's a major milestone. And with that, we will move on to the Superintendent Evaluation Framework. Again, lots of continuity in this evaluation framework for past years, and I think good alignment with the superintendent goals that Dr. Ricky Smith has showed us. And the only major tweaks were the agreed-upon evidence. But again, we hashed this out now to publicly. So questions or comments? Hearing none, we can move to a vote. I move to approve the 2021-2022 Superintendent Evaluation Framework as drafted. Motion was made by Vice Chair Lynn. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Director Zershme. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we will move to a coral vote. All those in favor, please say aye, aye. Opposed, say nay. And that motion carries as well. So the Superintendent Evaluation Framework has been adopted. All right. And so for our final action item, we will have a discussion about appointing a board representative to the Extracurricular Equity Fund Committee. So I'll provide a little bit of background here, though I think most board members are probably up to speed on this. Part of the budget investment that we made in the last budget cycle with a big shout, you know, the, we have to give a shout out to the students, to Director Moore, to the whole team that passed the pay-to-play fees removal. But part of that conversation was also a $100,000 Extracurricular Equity Fund, which was designated to go to clubs, arts, music, et cetera, to make them more accessible and equitable for the student population. The question, of course, is how do you spend $100,000 efficiently, effectively, equitably, et cetera? And so Director Un has assembled this committee. They've actually got basically full membership. They're waiting on us to, to get the, the second meeting schedules, kind of pulled everyone together for the first meeting. So basically you'll, you'll be focusing on creating a set of rules to implement the $100,000. This could include evaluating proposals from student groups. And there may also be some discussion about the $100,000 Transportation Fund, although that one seems a little bit more fleshed out than the, than the other fund. So that's what we are pointing to. Really, the way that this works is you can self-nominate and say that you would like to serve. In fact, that's probably a good place to start if there's someone who's really interested in taking on this role. And then we can make a formal motion once we've discussed that. So with that, I will open the floor and see if anyone is interested in serving on this committee. Director Irvin is interested? Okay, nope.
Certainly if someone else is equally interested or interested, that is fine. But this seems like a neat process to be a part of, and I'm happy to represent.
I think that would be great. And Director Un has stated that they are focusing on afternoon and evening times to accommodate us and some other folks as well. So hopefully that will work with your work schedule. All right. So unless there's anyone else interested, then I would entertain a motion.
I move to appoint Director Irvin as the Board Representative to the Extracurricular Equity Fund Committee.
Motion's been made by Director Zershme. Is there a second? Seconded by Director Hames. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we'll move to a coral vote. All those in favor, please say aye. And all those opposed, say nay. Let the record reflect, he meant to say aye. All right, motion carries five to zero. So, so here's where we are at. We are finished with all the items on the agenda except for the second public comment. There was one individual who signed up to present public comments. We did note that times are subject to change. However, we are at the end of our agenda and there's no one here. So here's what I am going to recommend. If board members are able, we'll go into recess for approximate, do you, Patty, recall what time we indicated? Nine o'clock? Okay, so that's an hour from now. I am comfortable staying here as chair to sort of talk with her and hear her concerns when she comes. If folks are not interested or able to stay for another hour, because I know that's a long time. But this individual did sign up to provide public comments, so I want to try to be fair to her if we can. So I guess I'm asking board members, what do you think?
So I, I believe I have her phone number somewhere in my, in my computer, so I can give her a call and let her know this. While I do that, and then I'll get back to the board as to what I will determine from her.
Okay, we will, we will take a five-minute recess and we will reconvene at 7:56. Okay, it is 7:55, so I will gavel this meeting back to order. And so Director Zershme attempted to call the patron who signed up for public comment. The patron was not able to make it in time, and we are at the end of our agenda. So what we're going to do is I'm going to adjourn the meeting. Folks are free to go home, but I will remain in the building to greet her. And I believe Dr. Ricky Smith is going to remain. Yep, so, and I did not bring my badge tonight. So obviously, yeah, so that, so that's what we'll, we will do for this patron and we'll offer the October 18th meeting or the board email as a way for her to share her comments. Any questions or comments on that? All right, with that, the meeting is adjourned at 7:56 PM.